What I wanted to start off is that when I first read the name of the room we're sitting in, evasion and innovation forum, I was like, hmm, what a strange name of the room. But I think it's quite fitting to the discussion that we have today on nuclear security. Despite the much larger recognition of nuclear terrorism as one of the key threats to global security, and despite some innovative approaches that states trying to follow to address these threats and risks, including the elevation of the topic to the level of the heads of states, and we all know about the Nuclear Security Summit process as, to a certain degree, a unique way to approach some of the threats on the entire plethora of the nuclear security challenges. Whereas still, as an international community, we're still grappling with nuclear security. So it's kind of awaiting our solution that would be global on the one hand, on the other hand, it would be meaningful and it would be satisfactory to a large number of international players. In this regard, the questions that we're still to deal with is how much states are willing to give up of their sovereignty and subject themselves to some kind of standards in nuclear security and to some monitoring of the implementation of these standards, right? What are the norm and standards should be? How large the scope of this global regime should be? And these are all issues that we are still, despite quite a significant progress in this area, we are still dealing with. So they keep awaiting us, so to speak, despite of the many innovative ideas that were put forward by governments, by non-governmental experts, but we're still tackling some of these issues. Our panelists today will be focusing, I'm really glad we have kind of a good lineup in terms of what would be covered and the expertise of our participants today. They will take stock of some of the achievements that have been made to date, including within the nuclear security summit process. They will provide assessment of the various aspects of the nuclear security summit processes, both the government efforts, the non-governmental sector pointing to some of the nuclear industry role in the process, and identify some of the remaining challenges, and there are plenty of them. And they will also try to put nuclear security in a context of its interaction with nuclear safety and nuclear safeguards in broader kind of context of nuclear governance, and see how it also fits into the broader agenda of nuclear nonproliferation, disarmament, and arms control. So with this kind of short introductory remarks, I'm hoping that we'll hear plenty of interesting observations, recommendations, and ideas from our three panelists. We'll go in the order of, we'll have first Paul Wilkie to speak, then Benjamin Oderter, and then Irma Arguelo. You have their bios in your folder, so I would not spend time on them. Each one will have 10 minutes, and then we'll have a discussion and Q and A. Paul, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Eleanor. Good morning, everybody. As many of you may know, and some of them you know for sure because you were there earlier this year, we had a nuclear knowledge summit in Amsterdam. And this was held in the framework of the Nuclear Security Summit. My intention is to explain to you a little bit what the structure of this summit process is and what happened in Amsterdam, and what some outstanding issues are that we have identified there. Now, this Nuclear Security Summit process actually is a good example of mission creep because the original nuclear security agenda in America was mainly focused on removing highly enriched uranium and plutonium from the former Soviet Union and safeguarding highly enriched uranium that was held in many research reactors mainly all over the world. Now, in the course of this summit process, the scope has been enlarged and broadened, so issues like cybersecurity have come up, and a lot of attention has been going to the international legal framework surrounding nuclear security. It is actually quite an interesting format which we have for these nuclear security summits. When you compare that to the MPT, just to mention one sort of circus of summits that I know fairly well, there is a role for NGOs in that process, but it is marginal. I mean, they have to fight themselves in a way, and there are some activities in the margins and some meetings are opened to them. But in the Nuclear Security Summit, actually, a full role was given from the first meeting that was held in Washington in 2010 to both industry and academia and NGOs. So it is sort of a triangle in which, of course, the government leaders take the decisions, but where also governments and NGOs do have influence on the process and may, from time to time perhaps, have somewhat of a leading role. So what our purpose was in the Nuclear Knowledge Summit in Amsterdam was to stay closely to the political agenda of the summit and at the same time see whether we could carry the discussion forward. Now, what came out of our discussions in Amsterdam may be interesting to mention in short. First of all, a major issue that was identified is that the international legal framework governing nuclear security is patchy. We all know that the Convention on Physical Protection of Nuclear Materials has come into force, but a very important amendment that would enlarge the scope of that treaty has still not yet entered into force, almost 10 years after its conclusion. Then there is EXANT, the Convention to Suppress Nuclear Terrorism. It entered into force, but very important countries still have not yet ratified that treaty. So we do have some treaties, but as I said, membership is far from universal. The Second Amendment to the CPPNM has not yet come into force, but even if those treaties were in force and had achieved universality, you still couldn't speak of universal coverage, legal coverage of nuclear security. Another issue that was identified at the Nuclear Knowledge Summit was that there are no binding security recommendations. The IAEA has been doing good work. They have an INFSEC series in which they have recommendations, and in this case, INFSEC 255, revision five, is applicable, but they are recommendations only, and they are not binding. It is very different, for example, from the situation in the field of civil aviation where the ECAO has set safe guidelines which are actually binding. It is remarkable that what we have in the field of civil aviation we still do not have in the nuclear industry. Now, there's a whole discussion, what do we need exactly? Do we need an all-encompassing nuclear security convention, or do we have to fill the gaps in the present framework? As a matter of fact, I have to report to you that we have not even achieved amongst academics, let's say, a consensus of what a way ahead would be or should be. I will come back to that later. Then there is, of course, the question of follow-up, which we discussed in Amsterdam. This summit process started in 2010. We had a meeting in Seoul in 2012, now in Amsterdam in The Hague in 2014, and in 2016, the last year where Obama will be president, there will be the last Nuclear Security Summit in Chicago. But what will happen afterwards? Who will carry on the process? The IAEA would seem to be the appropriate forum, and they have showed increasing interest in the topic. But obviously, it's up to governments to decide and to indicate how they want to proceed with this. Another issue that was identified, and I'm sorry that I wanted, I would like to be much more optimistic about what we have achieved and what the prospects are, but let's say, if you look at the really dangerous materials, the highly enriched uranium, plutonium, plutonium, only about 15% of these materials is in the civil nuclear sector. The rest is military. And, well, this is completely outside the scope of the discussions in the Nuclear Security Summit. Still, 85%, I mean, the 50% in the civil nuclear sector already is a lot. The 85% in military stock, it remains outside the scope of our discussions, and you can say, well, what's the problem with that? This military stock, they will be secure and safe and well-protected. Well, we have seen that not too long ago, in the Y12 facility in Oak Ridge, an 82-year-old nun accompanied by two middle-aged guys like me could breach the security and stroll around for hours before they were caught. And this is supposed to be the Fort Knox of highly enriched uranium. So even in the United States, the leader of this whole discussion in a nuclear military facility, apparently, breaches of security are possible. That doesn't look good. Now then, in view of the fact that there will be, I'm coming back to civil nuclear facilities now, in view of the fact that we don't have a cover and a universal legal instruments, and it will be some time before we have one, how can we create mutual confidence that security is in order? Well, we discussed the so-called IPAS missions, which consist of a visit of IAEA experts to a nuclear facility, and then they just scrutinize the security system and they give advice. Well, that's a very good system, as long as you don't have binding regulations, this can give confidence that if, for example, Belgium nuclear facilities are visited by the IAEA and an IPAS mission has been done, that gives some security confidence across borders that the issues are dealt with in an appropriate way. However, IPAS missions cannot be asked for by nuclear power plants or nuclear operators themselves. It has to be done by governments. It's also up to governments to decide what they do with the information. What we would hope, what many in the academic world would hope, is that if an IPAS mission is held, that some sort of outline of the main recommendations is provided to the outside world as a token of confidence. Another issue that we discussed is the issue of cybersecurity, and this is an issue, I know we had a session on cyber threats yesterday, cyber war, this is obviously closely related to that. Actually, this issue came up from industry because they identified cybersecurity as one of the areas where progress needed to be made. They are really in need of better standards in this field. And this brings me then to the last point, development of human capital. I don't know whether you read the Belgian newspapers or the Dutch newspapers, but just a couple of days ago, in a nuclear power plant in Belgium, an act of sabotage was committed. Now, this was not in the nuclear part of the plant, this was in the conventional, where the turbine, the steam turbines are, and apparently they had cut off the flow of lubricant to the turbines. So this is not a nuclear incident, it's not a nuclear part, but the fact that it happened in a facility where you would suppose people are highly screened, that just shows that we are not talking about theoretical threats or possibilities, but that indeed there are people out there who are willing to commit these acts. I got the message that I have to finish my talk, so this is what I will do. Thank you for your attention, and I'm open to questions later on.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Yes.
I really appreciate you giving such a broad overview of the previous summit and all these different, and some of the issues that have been discussed and still on the agenda. And just on the last point is to kind of add a little bit more. Some of you also are reading reports in the US, the cheating air force officers and some others. So the issues that are relevant, not only for the civil facilities, matter of human capital, are across the board, bringing back your note about 85% of military program outside of the international conventions that we have or some other processes. But I want to give floor to Benjamin for his remarks, please.
Thank you very much, Eleanor. Good morning, everyone. I thought, Paul, that I would be the one insisting on tricky points, but actually you did. But I don't want the whole session to appear as a negatively perceived nuclear security landscape, but I decided to insist on some of the main contentious or troublesome issues within this particular debate since 2010. But my point is not to be pessimistic or to insist on pessimistic perceptions, but rather to figure out what problems could be easily solved and which ones should be set aside for the near future, precisely in order to think about a realistic and reasonable governance system. I add that nuclear security is not so much a contentious issue when considering many topics belonging to the nonproliferation regime, which is not our topic here, but I will elaborate a little bit on that after. Maybe should we start by the very beginning? Do we have a global consensus on the threat? Officially, we do. Officially, we do, but I think that on the ground, we do not. Many states and many individuals within states, within civil society, do not think that nuclear security is a priority precisely because nuclear terrorism has never been a full threat, a threat being a mix of intention and capacity to harm. Several differences between states about nuclear security, in my opinion, come from this lack of a real common basis related to the perception of the threat. And this problem may be solved over the years, but the characteristics of the threat must be explained again and again. Nuclear terrorist attack, hopefully, has never been perpetrated so far. This must be debated. Why? And one must not have the perception that nuclear security is based on various political reasons or based on ideology. Another basic problem relates to the lack of a common definition of key terms. The IAEA, we know, proposes a definition of nuclear security, but in many countries, there is still a confusion between some key terms and on the definition of the notion itself. The Chinese, for instance, use a same term for nuclear security and for nuclear safety. Depending on departments and agencies or on the context, one can find somehow a confusion even in the United States of nuclear security. For the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, for instance, the concepts of safeguards and security are not clearly the instinct. The NRC states, I quote, that the terms safeguards and security are generally used to describe programs that promote the common defense and security and protect public health and safety by guarding against theft and sabotage. And we have the same, another confusion in the nuclear security fact sheet of the website of the State Department. And even in France, an important law was adopted by the parliament in 2006 dealing with transparency and nuclear security. This is the TNS law. And security is defined as safety plus security if you refer to the IAEA distinction. Are we talking about the same topic here? And I still do not think so. And the lack of a common understanding of the challenge can have real effects on the ground. And this problem, again, I think, can be solved to some extent, or at least it should be formally addressed by states being involved in the NSS process and after 2016 in order to have a clearer understanding of nuclear security. But it can prove difficult as well since a vocabulary problem is sometimes or very often reflecting a more substantial issue about the scope of the concept, and I will address this in a few minutes. Now, when you come to the details of the last NSS achievements, there are several problems to tackle. We all know that there are, at the moment, two legally binding instruments at international level, Paul talked about, so I won't elaborate too much on that. But too many states have not ratified the conventions yet. Seventeen of the latest NSS states participants had not ratified the CPPNM amendment of 2005 in March of this year. And of course, there are internal political or administrative reasons for that, but still it illustrates also that nuclear security has not been considered a real priority by many states so far. And again, this is not a very contentious issue, and progress in ratifications can be made pretty easily, I think. Legally binding instruments must be promoted. More problematic issues with, deal with the nuclear security framework, the scope of the concept, and the role of international bodies in a governance system worldwide. And I would like to identify and to detail some of these issues. First, we lack a common understanding on the standardization of nuclear security management and procedures at international level. What should be the most efficient format for a global nuclear security framework? For many states, and France being one of them, but also Pakistan, also China, also India, nuclear security must say a matter of national sovereignty precisely for security reasons. The design basis threat is an example of this. Countries can declare, and usually they do, that their DBT is regularly reviewed and updated to respond to the evolution of the threat, but they are naturally very reluctant to share the substance of it, are even to discuss what could be a common basis among states for DBTs. Second, there is no common understanding of the role that the IAEA should have after 2016. We all know that the agency's involvement in nuclear security has increased over the years, and for a majority of states, this is very good news, particularly because the NSS process is still working as a club of invited countries, 47 in 2053 this year. But for many states, nuclear safety is key because safety comes along with cooperation and assistance. Safeguards are mandatory, but as far as security is concerned, it is usually ranked third within the so-called three S approach. And by the way, the three S holistic approach of the agency has been endorsed at various levels, GRC, for instance, in Europe. But the concrete implications of the three S approach have not been clarified enough, I would say. At the moment, we still do not have a comprehensive understanding of the notion. There is also a mixed budgetary and political issue within the agency, as we know. For some, if nuclear security is to be funded on the annual regular budget, which is not the case at the moment for, I think, 94, 95% of it, safety programs run the risk of to be underfunded in the future. And paradoxically, the fact that nuclear security has been funded by extra budgetary resources, it's also criticized, the argument being the fact that the big countries around the nuclear security show, I would say, in the agency, and that nuclear security is a political tool or could be a political tool being used on a discretionary basis. I will finish on the third problematic issue, which is the scope of the nuclear security. The scope has broadened in 2012 in Seoul. Radioactive sources and materials were included in the discussions, which is a good thing since radioactive materials are certainly the last secure worldwide as far as non-state actors' related risks and dangers are concerned. But then you have, like Paul mentioned, the issue of fissile materials for military purposes in nuclear weapons states, legal or possessors, let's say. Within civil society, at least, and for some states, these materials should be a part of the international framework and should be supervised and monitored. This is a bad idea, in my opinion, because this is a way to mix two very distinct agendas. To merge both concepts and frameworks together, the nonproliferation and disarmament regime and a future possible security regime runs the risk of being counterproductive. We all know that the nuclear nonproliferation regime is based upon historic and very delicate bargaining. The MPT framework is the place for reviewing these issues every five years, and precisely because there are so many constructive steps to take in this very young nuclear security adventure, I think this is, there is no place for a heavy, let's say, politicization of nuclear security. And I will stop there. I'm really sorry I cannot participate in our debate, but I, as a matter of urgency, I need to be in Paris at the end of the morning. So I will hear my colleague, and then I have to leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Benjamin. And it's really unfortunate that you have to leave because some of your last... And it's really unfortunate that you have to leave, because your last intervention is very interesting and really worth discussing with regards whether it's a good idea or a bad idea to look at the civil and military stocks. I think that probably it's more nuanced, but I don't want to have the discussion right now. Maybe we'll save the topic for some other, or we'll have the discussion with the audience. I just wanted to add to something that you said regarding the IAEA role in the nuclear security. It has been elevated, as you said, and I would just correct a little bit that, for the first time, there have been budget, regular budget allocations for the office that increased. It's still not sufficient. I agree that a large part come from the voluntary contribution. But also, the status of the office has been elevated, which went from being the office to division, and much larger recognition by the states that nuclear security, despite confusion about what it means, is there to state. It becomes much more part of the package of, you cannot really address new developments in the nuclear energy or anything like that without ticking all the boxes, from safety to security to safeguards. But I want to give floor to Irma for your remarks.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming. I will talk about innovation and reason to innovate in our current nuclear security architecture, trying not to repeat concepts that have been shared by my predecessors. I think that there is an idea that is progressively gaining support and the need of an enhanced nuclear security system as a better way to prevent nuclear terrorism and related malicious acts involving nuclear activities. And I will share my views about how the foundation of such improved system would be perhaps the more inspiring legacy of the Nuclear Security Summit beyond 2016. The Nuclear Security Summit began with more or less moderate objectives concerning nuclear materials, but then such objectives were expanding through the successive summits. But from the very beginning, many voices in the expert community alerted about the need of reformulate the nuclear security architecture that has been identified with several difficulties that have been expressed before in the more efficient global system of governance. Such systems should smartly integrate the different elements and to complement with other new elements to better deal with increasing level of threats. Today, after three successive summits, I think that that original idea gains more and more force, and mostly because of the severity of threats and the awareness about such threats. So I will address why is today more essential than ever to have in place an improvement of our security system, what are the key properties or functionalities of such system, and thus, based on what is required to shape that system, the advance achieved after successive Nuclear Security Summit and remaining challenge for and after 2016. So, it is more essential than ever, because the world is becoming increasingly vulnerable to nuclear terrorism and illicit traffic. Nuclear threats shows new actors and faces, and there are increasing numbers of insurgent radical groups like al-Qaeda, revival, ISIS, et cetera, that are wanting to acquire nuclear materials or to make attacks to nuclear facilities. And the shapes of the faces of such attacks are also more diverse now than ever, because we are not thinking exclusively on material thefts to design a crude bomb or a dirty bomb, but also we are talking about cyber attacks, we are talking about conventional attacks to facilities, we are talking about theft of information, sensitive information to make all this possible, and in the worst of the scenarios, we are talking of the theft of poorly protected nuclear warheads. That would be the worst of the scenarios indeed. To better analyze the likelihood of these scenarios, it's important to take into account all what Paul and Benjamin have said about the quantities or inventories of HU and separate plutonium, fifty percent only under the IAEA and treaty guidelines, and the rest completely discretionarily on the decisions of any nuclear weapon states. We have nuclear warheads located in fourteen states, the owners plus the nuclear sharing under the NATO agreements. We have radiative forces almost in every country around the world. And we have also potential facility targets for either conventional or cyber attacks that include about six hundred operating reactors all over the world in at least sixty We have talked about security breaches and breaches in behavior of high official in charge of nuclear weapons complex. So, in terms of prevention, the situation is also complex. We have such constellation of instruments, most of them are not binding, and the most important binding, that is the instrument, that is the 2005 amendment for CPPM, is not yet into force. We are missing twenty-two ratification to get it into force. Decisions have been traditionally, from the early times of nuclear energy, in hands of states. But we should ask ourselves right now if it has been effective, and it should be effective in the future. Many states, I agree with Benjamin, has a low interest on nuclear security, mostly because they have a poor perception of the threats, but not only of the threats, but also of the risk involved, in terms of how such risk could affect the same states. Not only because we are talking about a global threat, a global risk, and global consequence. We are just studying, in order to have elements for decision, how such consequence could affect even the state where the attacks have not been performed. That is very important, because if I am a government official, I think that if an attack happens in London, nothing would happen in Argentina, it's very difficult to make the right decisions in order to compatibilize the decisions throughout the international community. So, in other words, there are many around the world that think that is not a priority and have no clue about the regional and national consequence of such kind of attacks. But how the situation could be improved? Well, I list quickly some of the key properties and functionalities that an enhanced global security system should have. It comes from the common sense, it's not technical. If we are talking about identifying gaps in the current system, we need a system able to close such gaps. Of course, we are talking about security. Security means that it's as strong or as weaker as the weakest part of the system. So if we don't achieve a comprehensive system in terms of participation and in terms of threat assessment, it is difficult to have a security, a strong security system. So, it implies that should be comprehensive in terms of which threats are you addressing with the system. It should seek, of course, minimization of nuclear weapons usable materials, because if we have such huge inventories of HU and separate plutonium, we have the risks there. We need to minimize weapons usable materials. We need to seek an universal addition and implementation of key legal instruments for the same reason. And it is important, as we are talking of a global threat, that we seek with a brand-new system accountability of each state towards the international community. The paradigm of one-hundred percent decision on the hands of each state should be broken, should be improved. It means to define some standards or a baseline shared and accepted by every state in the international community to achieve an universal application. And of course, it should be based on good practice sharing. But at the same time, the system should preserve the legitimate right of nuclear use by any state, and it should be done by design, not to erode the legitimate rights of every state. It should be also affordable and practical for low-resourced states, which should be support for implementation and compliance with cooperation and funding. Because as much, as many instruments we have, as more difficult is for low-resourced states to accomplish and to fulfill the goals. Well, the achievement to date of the Nuclear Security Summit and the challenge for the next summit in the United States. We can account many achievements in raising political interest on the topic and gathering more additions to the documents and to instruments, but there are some relevant challenges for 2016. The first is to achieve a broader representation of states. We have so far only fifty-three states participating in Netherlands, but some states, for example, regions like Latin America, we have had only four out thirty-three states. But if we consider the nuclear threat in broader terms, each one of such states could be subject of illicit trafficking, because some of them have problems with weak borders and weak institutional quality or corruption, and they could be a part of the illicit traffic network. And the representation of such states is important, because it's like an exercise. If you, with only Latin American states who have signed CPPM, if we could have CPPM today in force, if some, the twenty-two of them ratified it, and for many of them, it wouldn't cost very much to ratify it, but it's not in their priorities, and it should be there. The second point is the inclusion into the scheme of non-civilian nuclear assets as an activity. I disagree with Benjamin on the point. And the third is the improvement of the quality of political diplomatic negotiation throughout the Sherpa process, because we need to join forces between the different statements and initiatives, and many, many times, it hasn't happened. For example, the trilateral initiative, Trendon of Nuclear Security Implementation, gathered thirty-five out of fifty-three firms, and the joint statement, Reliance Security, a Comprehensive Approach to Nuclear Security, pushed by Brazil and Argentina and others, gathered only fifteen, and the overlap among them has been only seven, seven adherence. It means that two very good initiatives, because of the problems in the diplomatic negotiation, have been endorsed, but all such bulk number of states. And it's very important to achieve that. So, the last point, and I finish with it, is we should get for the next summit some chance to set the foundations for the future system, in the sense we should get to appear as a decision in the communiqué, consensus about the key principles of the enhanced systems, measures to promote the universal relation of key international instrument, more concrete measure, not the wish to do that, agreements to simplify on reporting and bureaucracy, systematization of international peer reviews and voluntary commitments, and definition of a leadership scheme after nuclear security process. And, and it is, I recognize, much more ambitious, the basis of a binding tool label to organize the whole system. So, to achieve an efficient global nuclear security system requires breaking all silos and paradigms, and to understand that nuclear security is an integrated part of the whole effort to reduce nuclear risks, together with disarmament and non-proliferation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Irma, and thank you for providing some good recommendations and suggestions. I'm sure there will be a number of questions, how you see this, some of the specific recommendations going forward. What I would try to do, do you have a couple of minutes, or not?
Yes, can I make just two or three very brief comments before leaving?
That's exactly my point, because I know you wanted to, we all wanted to hear your, maybe some clarifications or additional thoughts on your approach to the military material inclusions, and maybe some other observations and comments that you have.
Yes, thank you very shortly. I don't think I have to clarify too much the position, but first, on what you said about the IAEA, I agree with you, and I recognize that there are good signs, the fact that the office has come to a division, and the fact that nuclear security becomes to be funded on the regular budget. But still, many countries are resisting to that, and particularly since, of course, March 2011, because we have safety problems in all the countries. We have to say that there are and there could be safety problems in France, where we have fifty-eight reactors, et cetera. Safety issues are really issues, and they can be identified precisely. The reason why I think that the debate about nuclear terrorism should not be a taboo. We do not, we do not have to think that this is a fact. We have to elaborate very much in detail what is the threat, what are the dangers, what are the risks precisely. On this story of nuclear materials for nuclear weapons, I just say that this is not a principle, this is not a matter of principles, this is not the point of someone, you know, French stance on that. I think that this, in the short run, now, this is really counter- I think that this, in the short run now, this is really counterproductive. You won't have an agreement on that, and I think that the link between nuclear non-proliferation, nuclear disarmament, and nuclear security is very interesting, and we have a very good example of that in the Middle East, in the common, in the current debate of a WMD free zone in the Middle East. And we have the pleasure to have in that room Dr. Majoub, who is here, and he really can address this point, I think, I have to leave it, I think you will want to address this. This is a particular landscape or region where this link is real on the ground. It's not a political or ideological stance, it is, it is, for me, it is very hard to come to nuclear security in the Middle East, since we have that debate over Israel, Iran, and the last. So, my point was that, I think that for the moment, it is very counterproductive to come in the debate with this particular issue. That's all.
Could I just clarify? You are suggesting that this debate should not happen per se, or that Nuclear Security Summit is not the right forum for that debate?
I think that Nuclear Security Summit is not the right forum for that, but I don't know what should be the forum. Sorry to...
Just wanted to make sure where your comments come from. Okay, so you have, thank you, we much appreciate you taking time to add some additional points. Now I want to open the floor to, oh, I see a lot of hands, and I would have trouble to remember, it's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'll start with William, please. You had the hand, right?
William Janssen, European Commission, Joint Research Center, but previously in industry. And in fact, I mentioned that because my questions, my remarks are going to address mainly that industry part. The first part would be to Paul, basically, you described the process of the summit and the Knowledge Management Summit, but in fact, it has, in my opinion, been certainly a pity that there was no common meeting between the industry partners and the people who think more about the legal framework, about the international instruments. Because the red wire through my remarks is going to be that, in this area, I really think we still need to ensure a higher buy-in from the nuclear industry. On one hand, as I said in the meetings for the summit, on the other hand, if we, as Elena said, we have to think about the links between security and safety, there are a number of pros and a number of cons, but from a distant looking, you would say safety is typically an economical concern. The nuclear operators, they share information on nuclear safety, because if a pump breaks down, your power plant stops, and you lose more than a million euro per day, whereas if you have a security breach, you don't have the same economic consequences. So we might have to come to a system where the operators, basically, feel the same motivation to make sure that they exchange best practices, because they know there is going to be some kind of severe consequences to a breach in nuclear security. If you look at legal instruments, I mean, why did we have so soon after Chernobyl the early notification convention and the mutual assistance convention? And whereas today, we are still not having any legal obligation to inform a neighboring country if you lose a nuclear material out of control. It is done on a voluntary basis, the IAEA operates the international trafficking database, but there is no real obligation, neither for the notification nor for the mutual assistance. I mean, if there is an illicit trafficking event, and you want to analyze where it comes from, you have to count on the goodwill from people to do the forensics or to inform you about what has gone on. So I think there is, there is a number of instruments which are out there in the safety world, which have been made for good reasons, where we should think about how we can piggyback on those things to raise more attention for the security event. And then the last remark, again related to the industry, is inspired by Irma's remark, because you mentioned at one point in time the sensitive technology protection, or sensitive information you mentioned. So we speak about nuclear materials, we speak about information. The next step would be to speak about technology, about instruments, about pressure transducers, about whatever you like, to enable, let's say, a country to get hold of technology, which allows them to clandestinely produce nuclear materials. So my question there, and I know this is not easy possibly to answer, but would be, in how far could a process like the Nuclear Security Summit go beyond this nuclear material and information, and also address the topic of technology? So either malevolent theft of technology or inadvertently transferring technologies? So there, we enter into the area of export control, but as we don't have an international forum where this topic is really being discussed, I wonder whether beyond 2016, and possibly with involvement of the IAEA, we could not embrace this topic as well?
Excellent questions and comments. I will pass over, who's the next, I think, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm Schickel van der Meer, the Klinken Institute in the Netherlands. It was a very interesting panel, and I liked the discussion on extending the agenda, the Nuclear Security Summit process now mainly on, well, this 15%, as Paul said, on civil material, highly enriched uranium and plutonium. There was some discussion on including the weapons also in it, the military material, but I would wonder your opinion on extending the agenda also to another dangerous material. If I listen to terrorism experts, they say, well, the risk that terrorists will get their hands on highly enriched uranium or plutonium is big, but the bigger risk is radioactive sources. Terrorists just walking into a hospital or laboratory to get radioactive material and build a dirty bomb. Should the agenda of the NSS also be extended to that level, or do you think that's, well, impossible? Thank you.
I remember there was one other hand on this side. Then I'll come to this side. I'll collect this side first, and then give you the floor, and then we'll collect from the other side.
Okay, my name is Claas van der Meer, from the Belgian Nuclear Research Center. Well, I would like to make, let's say, some kind of witness from a nuclear institute that works, in fact, with the nuclear material that we're talking about. First of all, what I see in the practice that I've seen developing in the last, let's say, 20 years, is that there is an increase of security, because it has been, become more and more difficult for us to work with the nuclear material. In the past, I could enter the room and just take the plutonium and measure it. Now it takes a lot more things just to enter that room in order to get the material. So, there is really a development with respect to the nuclear security. A second thing I want to mention is that we still want to work with that material. So, the material is necessary for us to do experiments with. It's not that it's just there, and staying there and being dangerous, no, we need it. So it's not that we can put all the material in some kind of storage in the Y12 and that it remains there. Your remarks, Paul, with respect to, let's say, more transparency about security, that is interesting, but you should be very careful in where you're transparent with. The problems, we don't want our problems, that there undoubtedly are with respect to nuclear security, to be on the street, so that others know this. And with respect to this IPAS, being asked only by governments, it's also clear that the nuclear material, high enriched uranium and plutonium, is basically not used in nuclear power plants. It's only, let's say, used in research institutes with research reactors, et cetera. Only when you have MOX fuel in a power plant, there you will have a security issue with respect to this nuclear weapon material. Okay, I had some remarks with respect to the three S. Mr. Udo Koevertur, he said that he considers security as the third priority of the three Ss. I'm working mainly in nuclear safeguards. We always consider safeguards as the third priority, so that's a matter of how you see it, how you perceive it. And I think with this, I would like to conclude what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions, and I would probably give floor now for the answers, and then we'll collect additional questions. Paul, would you like to take?
Yes, I can't promise that I will address each and every comment, but I try to do at least some of them. As to the interrelationship between nuclear security, summit, the government, and the industry, and the experts, we have seen in this version of the NSS already a lot of interchange, certainly between the knowledge summit and the industry summit. This started about six months before we organized our events. We have adopted, for example, the issue of cybersecurity on our agenda, because we understood it was interested and important for industry. We also had industry present at our meeting, they spoke, and the NKS was present at the industry summit, and we also spoke there. The same goes for the Nuclear Security Summit, the government part. My understanding is that the organizers of the Nuclear Industry Summit in the United States, Marvin Kettell, I think it is, he is of Fertel, he wants to have even closer operation between at least industry and experts. Now, what was said about a breach of safety being very costly, there is more and more the awareness in industry that a breach of security in one plant would spill over to others. So it is a common interest to improve security-related issues. In that context, I think that, because we, I personally don't expect much progress to be made by governments in the next one and a half years or so, but I think that industry, together, for example, with WINS, will make good progress towards establishing training programs for operators, security-related training programs. They will focus on cybersecurity. So, one of the spill-offs of the whole process is that the security awareness in industry has increased, and that they are working amongst themselves to find practical solutions. I think that is very important also with, in connection with technology theft issues. These are basically related to the human capital, I already mentioned this. It's very difficult to see how you can have international treaties that would promote, let's say, human security, or that, this is really something where the industry has to take its responsibility and work together with their knowledge centers, like WINS, as I mentioned already, to promote training, to promote screening procedures, to look at how you can develop software, which is typically on outside, and still be secure about what you get on your systems. Then, the 15%, well, this is linking into completely different discussion also, the fissile material cutoff treaty comes into, comes to mind, for example. What I think is that, and this is just an idea I'm floating, and every time I do that, it's been hammered down, but what I think we should begin with is to have some sort of an inventory treaty. Before we can start to talk about limiting the production of fissile materials for explosive purposes, we at least would need to know how much the holdings are presently of the nuclear weapon states. So perhaps as a first step, we could work towards an inventory treaty, where at least the nuclear weapon states would announce how much they have, and perhaps you could have even verification mechanisms in place to verify how that they have. I mean, a lot of work has to be done before we can bring the other 85% into the fold. And this might be a first step, but it's still very, very premature, the thinking on these areas. Then on transparency, of course, the sort of transparency you would want to have out of an IPAS mission is not that we identify in public where the security holes are, that would be very dangerous, but the fact that they are being held, that recommendations are being implemented. I know that the Dutch government has published the results of the IPAS mission in a way that we think it can do no harm, and we hope that others will do the same.
Thank you very much, Paul. Irma, would you like to answer some of the questions?
Yes. Concerning the work with the industry, I think that there would be, for the next summit, a closer cooperation between both side summits, the Nuclear Knowledge Summit, the name it takes, or and the industry one. And it would be desirable to have a common statement, final statement on joint statement, that haven't happened in former summits. The Nuclear Security Summit communiqu have reflect the industry statement, but not the, because we didn't have a Nuclear Knowledge Summit statement. And I think that the cooperation should be in such way that the expert community could fit the industry thought and the industry decisions on the topic. So, the desirable path would be to ask more cooperation. Concerning the safety as economic concern, I agree with Paul that security should be even the biggest economic concern. The problem is that security events are of low probability, but it doesn't mean that the risks are low, because the risk is even bigger than safety concerns in terms that the consequence of security events. So, I think that this concept about the risk of low occurrence events should be improved and communicate enough in order to the actors understand the real dimension of risk. It would be very sad to wait that something happened to begin to think this over. We never thought that could be in the past, a network, an illicit network, that AQK, who thought, who could thought that several proliferation in certain states could be boosted because of the transfers of technology, of enrichment due to the AQK network. And it wasn't anticipated, but it happened. It was a low probability event, and it happened. So we shouldn't wait that. Concerning Sico's word, a question, I think that to be realistic, we need to expect or to try to work during the following two years to have agreement over the main concepts, and then to go to practical terms after 2016. The main concept should be that the system should be systematically improved. And then what it includes, if you have the main concepts in terms of covering the required threats, and mostly to show flexibility to add new threats in terms, in the moments it could be assessed, it could, you end covering all the necessary risks involved. And this.
Thank you for your interesting suggestions. I just wanted maybe on my add to the discussion a little bit, I fully agree that there is much more room for the cooperation between industry, governments, and academia, non-governmental experts. And if, one thing that has not been kind of highlighted, but in fact, the Nuclear Security Summit process had brought these communities closer. They're not as close as we probably would want them to be, but it is much closer than where we started in 2010. But there is room to grow, definitely. I very much like your suggestion about the inventory, and that also falls into Irma's comments about how we put nuclear security in the context of a larger nuclear governments and non-proliferation and other issues. The only suggestion maybe I will have is, you know, I The only suggestion maybe I will have is, you know, I'm really skeptical that we will have much progress if we just started with treaties. I think maybe there are other ways to make inventories available and start, countries starting working on them. There is an example of the IEA plutonium guidelines where countries do publish their civil plutonium, separated plutonium holdings. Some countries report voluntarily in these guidelines their even highly niche uranium stocks. So I see no reason why this effort cannot be expanded and countries start. And it's not NPT membership related, so it is an instrument that could allow much better report of the holdings, both civilian and military. Just needs to be political will to do it. And it doesn't require that strenuous negotiation, ratification and everything else. So maybe just a comment on that. But I would like others to give their comments and ask questions. We'll start with you, Thomas, then Sonia, then a couple of hands there.
Yeah, Thomas Jantner, Professor of International Relations, Stockholm University. It was very interesting to listen to all the presentations. I'm sorry that Benjamin ran away because I've had a couple of questions to him. But I, okay, do you hear me now? Okay. So let's say that we are successful in the world community to put a treaty, had the legal framework on paper, we have the states, the majority of states to sign and ratify it, if it's a convention or a treaty, whatever. But then comes the big problem, as I see it, because we need to think in a different way. We live in a different world today compared for 10, 15 years ago, where we have certain regions where the risks of nuclear security risks are much greater, like for instance in Asia, where we have a real upgrading of nuclear power is easy. That sometimes I think we have too much of European focus on what's going on in the world today. So and what we see in Asia is a greater role for nuclear power, where we have South Korea who wants to be an exporter of nuclear technology. We have India thinking along the same lines, China with their building up of a new nuclear power infrastructure based very much on their own technology. So what I'm trying to say is here, we need a new kind of division of labor between a global supervisory capacity and a regional responsibility. And regional bodies that has also a decision-making power and that, I think, was raised indirectly by Wilhelm to bring in the industry to make this happen in real terms. And we have a couple of interesting initiatives running in Asia, for instance, if we can, if I should use, may use Asia as an example, Forum for Nuclear Cooperation in Asia, Asia Nuclear Safety Network and so on and so forth. However, and I think Benjamin is right there, because different perceptions of risks meant that states is not so willing, not all the states are willing, to take that step, to leave sovereignty a bit and give decision-making powers to these regional bodies. But I think it's needless. I think if you could reflect a little bit on that, if you think that is possible, because without this decision-making power to regional bodies, I don't see a great future for the efforts to prevent nuclear security threats.
Yes, thank you, Thomas. I would appreciate if you formulate your questions a little bit shorter because the time.
Thank you. Sonia Drobys with the Verification Research Training and Information Center, also known as Vertec. It's a nonprofit organization based in London. I have two comments, I'll try to be brief. First comment is to just follow up on Elena, what she said as an introductory question. Are states ready to renounce sovereignty? And Irma, I think you mentioned the need for a shift of paradigm in the way we approach the issue. Maybe adopting a different perception on what sovereignty is would be a good approach. Signing up to an international agreement is not renouncing sovereignty, is actually a sign of sovereignty. And looking at what's out there and what the international legal framework for nuclear security is at the moment, I don't think we can say that the existing instruments are very intrusive in the way they regulate nuclear security. There's no inspection system, for instance, as is the case with safeguards. So maybe this is something that should be taken into account. Second comment, further to Paul's presentation and remarks on the legal framework. He mentioned the international legal frameworks and the importance of universalization of the existing instruments. I think implementation of the existing instruments is also very important. It's not only signing up to the convention, but also then doing what's required by the convention at the national level. And in that respect, I would like to be a bit more optimistic about the results of the Nuclear Security Summit. There's been two gift baskets. First, the Strengthening Nuclear Security Implementation Initiative that was put forward by the Netherlands, South Korea and the US. And I think more than 30 states signed up to that and it's supposed, states are supposed to commit to the Nuclear Security Series, the Nuclear Security Guidelines and the Code of Conduct. And also another gift basket, it's Indonesia's gift basket, the National Legislation Implementation Kit on Nuclear Security, which is a, contains a model law to help states adopt nuclear security legislation. Thank you.
There is a gentleman behind Sonia.
Thank you. Matthew Cotty from the double I, double S. And from Sonia's optimism, I'm going to add a little bit of pessimism. First, two very quick interrogated questions, then just a quick comment. First of all, we've spoken about the relationship between industry and academia. One pretty fundamental relationship that hasn't been mentioned yet is US-Russia. And what impact is that likely to have on nuclear security going forward? Relatedly, what happens post Obama? So the election is coming up in 2016. If it's a Republican candidate, then I'd imagine they will try and kind of remove themselves from the nuclear security issue because it is so personally tied to Obama himself. So what are the prospects, do you think, if there is a change of leadership, which there will be? And just also a very quick remark. I think Benjamin mentioned, how do we separate nuclear security from MPT politics? You can't, they're inseparable. And despite explicit attempts to try and do this, the Nuclear Security Summit being one, which tries to insulate nuclear security from that concept. Admittedly, the message became a little bit muddled with the US and UK suggesting that nuclear security becomes a fourth pillar of the MPT. Not a popular move. But it's also important to remember that nuclear security has evolved from non-proliferation and safeguards. Just look at physical protection, CPPNM, for example. And I think moving nuclear security back into a broader framework within the IEA is actually a positive move because it focuses back on technical aspects more and removes it from Ministry of Foreign Affairs and diplomats, which inherently is going to involve politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Very good comments and questions. And there is, on the back, yes, please.
My name is Lars Eriklande. I was your representative in Vienna for some years in the 90s and then again in the end of the last decade, ended 2011. What I saw over the years was a huge shift from almost unique attention to safeguards, to broadening over to safety and then more and more support for nuclear security. But still, when I left in 2011, we were at the point where we did not have the regular budget and we had still, in this, in this group, over the last two years, still a debate on who should be involved in nuclear security. So I'm very much welcome, the panel saying that this is a, has, the paradigm has to be broadened because I agree with the literature, although being a layman, saying that you need to gather all the necessary and sufficient conditions in order to have a layered defense, basically to delay any, any potential nuclear terrorist to get access. And for that, you need to involve very many people. So the notion that we have had, been discussing in this room in the earlier years, that basically this is something for a very small club of people, has to be counteracted, I believe. I mean, I've been working with the UNOD CEO over many, many years, starting in 96. And what we've done on the organized crime side is basically saying that everything comes together. So basically, my question to the panel is brief. Where are we on this now? How big is the resistance deal? You know, from those who want to see this as basically something that very few people should be involved in, we're on the very high level of sensitivity and confidentiality. Thank you.
And I will take a last question and then give panelists the floor. We may delay a little bit, five minutes or so in that session. Please, over here.
I don't have a question, so maybe then after the panelists respond, then I will.
Okay, if we have time, we may resort to that. Okay, who would like to start first? Irma? Okay.
To Sonia, to Sonia, I completely agree with your comments. I think that the issue of implementation is as important as the signature and ratification because many sign and ratify and do nothing afterwards. I think that certain profiles of states has, have low incentive to implement the international treaties. And for example, so I specifically mentioned low resources countries. And I think that in this part, we, the international community should improve incentives for implementation, not state at the level of mere declarations or statements or joint statements about that is required to implement, but also to help implement. I think in the National Implementation Kit is a very good project and I agree completely with that. But the should, incentives should be defined case by case. But today, the system works in different ways because if you, if you want to get close to the IEA, you should pay for that, not to be paid for implement. I put this in rough words, but actually, we need to be more subtle in order to get countries on a case by case basis to implement the legal international instruments required. Concerning the role of the Russian-United States relationship, I think that the importance of the good relations, to keep the relations at the best level as possible, transcends the problem of nuclear security and it affects every one of aspects of international security. So it's essential. I think that part, when, when I talk about the improvement of the process during the Sherpa meeting, part of the problem is the Dutch kind of strategic game of acceptance and denial between the different powerful actors. And it is very, very complicated to get solutions or common views if this trend persists or spoils in the future. We should think that, we talked here, is not an easy problem. We are used to think that all problems has easy solutions. But the issue of nuclear security involves very, very big dilemmas. And then, so we are working on this, specific issues, we should be patient and persistent and not to, and very resistant to frustration, maybe. But because they are long-term goals, not short-term goals, we don't think, to be realistic, that we, all we have shared with you could be achieved in short terms. But it is necessary to have at the base that the international community could give to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Irma, Paul, your comments?
I will be very brief because we are already past the time we should have stopped with the session. But I think there are both reasons for optimism and pessimism, as has been mentioned by the gentleman in the far corner, the former representative of Eurotum in Vienna. It wasn't on the agenda in 2011 as much as it is today. And last year in June, I think it was, the IEA had a very interesting conference on nuclear security, the first one, giant conference, I think 800 people were there. And so what has happened in the course of this process is that the awareness of the issue has increased and the attention given to the issue has increased, both in industry, academia and with governments. So that is a good sign. What is also positive is that we are thinking of what to do after 2016. It's obvious that this is an issue that has to be carried over into the future and it is, makes sense that this would be, on the one hand, the IEA. Now I come to the regional issues. We can also say that there are some interesting regional initiatives taking place. The EU is a knowledge center for many countries that are, let's say, in the EU orbit. There are programs, knowledge is being transferred. I know that, for example, in Korea, there's a training center, regional training center for security issues, where countries in the region can, can, can operate, work, work through scenarios to see whether the people are well-trained. So in a regional sense, there are very good and interesting initiatives being taken. Now, the question of Sonia about, I think, to what extent are countries willing to transfer sovereignty to international bodies? Well, they typically are not very willing to do that. They are willing to join conventions, which you say, indeed, that's a sign of sovereignty that you can do that. But to have as a result that an intrusive inspection regime comes about, like for safeguards, I think will be very hard to see in the field of security for different reasons. But the main one being that with safeguards, it's not very intrusive in the sense that the safeguard inspectors only see part of the operations, they don't see the heart of it. When you want to look at security issues, you have to be going into an operation in much more detail. And I, I think many operators and governments will be very reluctant to allow that to happen. So you have to find a solution for that. Then finally, Russia, United States. Even before the Ukraine, when we were organizing the Nuclear Knowledge Summit, we had a pre-session. And I can remember that the Russian representative there, I think you were there as well, said, there is no problem. We have never had a nuclear security issue in the 30 or 40 years that we have nuclear energy. So in other words, why are we doing this? So that, that sort of reluctance was already present before we, at a time when probably the relationship with Russia was at its best. So how this will develop in the future is anybody's guess. I would leave it at that.
If you allow me, I know we went past, just for maybe a couple of additional comments because some of the questions were addressed and some still kind of maybe. and some still kind of maybe a little bit more nuances to add. On the impact of the US-Russian current situation, of course, it will have an impact. Because, you know, some of the programs that were still going on in Russia, they are currently going to be stopped. And obviously, some of the disagreements in other areas will spill over in the discussion in nuclear security. I have no doubts about it. What I wanted to maybe say that with regards to the post-Obama, Matthew, coming to your question, I don't think that if it's a Republican administration, that they would completely kind of ignore the nuclear security issues. In fact, nuclear security has been on the agenda for, through all the administrations in the US. And actually, during the Bush administration, they very much continued to follow on some of these nuclear security issues. Obviously, I doubt that the summits will continue. They would probably try to find some other form. But I would say this is not a partisan kind of issue, at least in my view. And on your question, maybe on the how big is the resistance? It depends on, you know, there are so many faults of the resistance, or different perceptions and everything. It's different perceptions between countries that have nuclear industry and materials, and obviously, the countries that don't have them. The resistance is like, why do we need to comply with some of these extra burdens and instruments and everything if we don't have anything? That is one kind of fault line. Then the other one is the government-industry relationship. You know, in some countries, government-industry is kind of a one vertical relationship, and in some where, it's two separate. And leave, private industry has its own rules and everything else. And how do you reconcile these differences? You know, even in the United States, maybe the government wants a little bit more standardization, but the industry would say, like, wait a minute, we have different concerns here. And many others, just in general, the division between kind of north-south, some of the more kind of poor countries with resources and everything, even though they support the goal. But implementation is rarely difficult. You know, the priorities are, you know, in developing countries is feed the people and meet the basic needs. So we all, but we all are struggling with these issues. I like, Thomas, your idea of the regional approach. I think that is quite useful. And I think it's already been kind of addressed, you alluded to it, with some of the regional security training programs. I think it's also the way the Nuclear Security Summit process unfolds, particularly with the government summit, is this kind of baskets by a group of countries. I think this mechanism could be used even further to develop certain initiatives, find the countries that are on the same page, and promote it. It's like promotion by the example, by doing certain initiatives, and then other countries joining these trends. And in terms of transparency, I know, and I hear all the comments here about the sensitivities, not disclosing information and everything. But in the end, there are many ways to overcome it. And I'm not suggesting that everybody comes and inspects thoroughly. But there are certain levels where the information can be shared. And one of the best examples, that if there is a will and there is a decision to do so, is the same US-Russian cooperation on nuclear security, and many other countries, you know, for like Norway, Sweden, and others assisting with their security upgrades, where there would be sensitivities on the side of the receiving side. But yet, there are ways to organize things, third-party verification and others, that could take care of some of these concerns. So if there are real decisions and needs, I think there are, could be solutions to that. But I don't think we will find out all the solutions today. But I'm really grateful to our speakers and panelists that they brought many of the really interesting points and issues. And I really appreciate also your good questions and comments. But let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.